Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, April 20th at 7:00 PM. This is a regular session of council tonight where we will be reading some ordinances. Our first item of business is to establish the quorum we have with all members of council present tonight. Second item of business is disposition of minutes from our regular session held on April 6, 2015. Do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
I still move, second.
We have a motion and a second for disposition of the minutes. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. The motion carries. The next item of business is communications. At this point in our city council session, we have an opportunity for council members and then elected officials to bring up any items of business. And I know that one of the communications that council members have received in the last day or so has been in response to the Number Fest that was held over the weekend. What we will do is, since this is a regular session, we will have comments at the end. The very last business item after the ordinances have been read is an opportunity for citizens to speak on items not on the agenda. And so we will allow three minutes per citizen. You come up and announce your name and address and then make any comments. We will set a three-minute timer. And I would say tonight, since we have a fair number of people it looks like who want to make comments, if after one person has made a comment and then you have something new to add, that's great. But we're hoping to have, you know, new comments each time. So if you have something different to add to the conversation or the discussion. That will help us the following week when we will have a committee of the whole and we'll have time for further discussion on this issue. We'll also have more information from city administration and perhaps the county administration as well. So communications from council members, please. Do we have any? Yes, council member Butler.
I'll just acknowledge that I did speak with a couple of business owners who admitted that they were adversely affected by the Number Fest. And I encourage more people affected or business owners to contact council members as well as the administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from council members?
Certainly, I'm in agreement, and I've had the same experience from a variety of different, both business and residents of the city.
Okay. Thank you, member Pappy. Other communications? Yes, council member Patterson.
Current topic, thank you. Madam President, I have two things I want to mention tonight. First of all, this is the second year running that the city of Athens has been vying for the bid to be the host for the International Towngown Association. I was on the conference call, as was Service Safety Director Paula Heran Mosley, where we spoke to the Chair of the Bid Committee as well as the Executive Director. They gave us a glowing report card in terms of how the bid did. Unfortunately, we did not get it again this year. But we were strongly encouraged once again to apply for the 2017 host site. So I wanted to share that with everyone. The second thing I wanted to mention, and I've actually brought a prop, actually a finished product that I do want, hopefully they can close in on this. The Athens Foundation Grant, some of you may remember, we were awarded $3,500 for cigarette butt bins for recycling. Put this out there and hopefully they can get a good shot of it. And this is, Passion Works put the paint scheme on this, which was part of the grant itself. These will be hanging, you'll see these slowly coming up on Court Street. Some will be going up on Union, but they're being strategically placed because we're starting a cigarette butt bin recycling campaign in the city to try to eliminate as much of the cigarette butt litter as we possibly can. Plus, these look nice and they fit with the Essence of Athens Plan.
Mentioned Keep America Beautiful gave us the grant also for additional cigarette butt.
They did. Keep America Beautiful cigarette butt bin campaign or cigarette butt litter. They did. It was a $5,000 award and that is for an additional 20 cigarette butt bins, which are shared. Some are going to be going in Haydenville as well as here in Athens. So there will be 55 of these cigarette butt bins going out throughout the city, which is timely, given that a lot of you are aware, Ohio University is planning, and I think they're on track with going smoke-free 2015, '16 academic year, which certainly poses the issue of where will people be putting out their cigarette butts if they are not able to smoke on campus or elsewhere. So therefore, you'll be seeing these cropping up in more and more places, up and down Court Street and strategically placed around campus.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for the work and the great. Any other communications from council members? Communications from other elected officials? Mayor Wile?
Well, I went and spoke at the beautification day. I'd like to thank everybody who participated in that. I went around talking to various groups there and a lot of them were collecting cigarette butts, although they weren't really sure why they were doing it. So your CBBRs, is that what we're going to call them now or something? Will come in handy as long as everybody, and it looks great. I saw it there early, it looks like it's well-constructed, too. So thank you for beautification day. I thought you'd talk a little bit about the Challenge by Choice Disabilities Event, which, you want to do it?
I certainly can. Challenge by Choice Disability Speaks, which is an annual event that the Commission on Disabilities puts together, was last Thursday. It was, had a great turnout, as well as a real stirring keynote speaker, who was Dr. J.W. Smith, who spoke about kind of challenging us in the city of Athens as kind of a turning point to kind of change the way we speak. But anyway, that you'll be seeing, I'm sure, on ACTV. It was recorded while we were there and I encourage everyone, if you get a chance, to watch it, because his speech, like I said, it was moving.
And just to tail-end on that, about two, three weeks ago, I noticed the obelisk that were appearing on his screen there, and I was thinking, what the hell's going on there? I see it's for actually labeling where the accessible points are for wheelchair accessibility, which is, I think it's a very good thing at that point.
I do, too.
Other things, basically, this is the spring cleanup week, so you can take as, put as many trash bags out as possible. We're in day one, of course, as passed. Also, we're preparing for a move-out, so for all the recyclables to be put out at the end of the school year.
Mayor, can you describe what we can, if it's, it has to be in a bag?
It has to be in a bag, yes.
And if you have things that are larger than putting in a bag, you can take it to?
You can take it to West State Street Service Garage. I forget the actual number, but it would be, it's open from 7:30 in the morning to 7:00 at night. They have dumpsters there, two roll-offs, one for metal and one for non. No hazardous stuff, of course. You just need proof of your residency, which would be a bill or license plate.
And you don't have to do that on your garbage day?
No.
You can do it all this week. So if you have multiple trips, you can take them.
Yes. And if you have, as I say, you can put as many bags as you want out. It's spring cleaning time, so it's the time to get all that debris out, put it out in as many bags as you can. If you don't put it in a bag, you will be charged by the cubic, I think it's $25 for the first four cubic yards. So that would be, I think that's about a washing machine size. So if you put a washing machine out, they'll probably charge for it. So that's going on. And I can't emphasize that enough, because some people are still not aware of it. We're already into day one. Monday was my pickup day, so I've done my cleanup, so to speak. And as I say, move-out is where we're going to, we're working on that to get all the different organizations to try recycling and reuse the various material. PSA came out early today, South Shannon is closed for some water repair and sewer repair. There's going to be a work fair, the 22nd Wednesday at the community center is put on by Athens John Family Services. That's same day as Earth Day, and in response to Earth Day, we're going to have free rides for our bus. We're not charging for our bus use that day. That would be Wednesday, April 22nd. That's in conjunction with half-cap and Athens Public Transit. Let's see, I think I've covered all that, free bus, work fair, spring cleanup. Oh, yeah, there's candidate forum coming on tomorrow night? Is that correct?
And Arbor Day.
What?
Arbor Day.
Arbor Day, yes. Oh, yes, that's the 28th, I believe. We're going to be at the Bridges Tree Conference on that. I think you still have time to do that. So that's all I really have. I'm sure I missed something. Thanks for getting this CBBRs out, and we'll start putting them up soon as possible.
And the detail on the candidates forum is that it's being held at the community center this year, and it will be the candidates for the at-large positions. And that will be starting at 6:30.
I think there's a sign in front. I don't know where I have to check the time.
6:15, and a sign in front of the city hall. Thank you very much. Communications from Log Director Eliason?
Nothing required.
Okay. All right. Finishing that, we will start the ordinances for third reading. The first one being ordinance 2415. This is an ordinance authorizing design and preliminary engineering of the South Side Bridges Project, number 290, and it's introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to adopt 2415.
Second.
Just as a little bit of back history, we received a $400,000 grant from the Ohio Development Services Agency for what we're calling our South Side Bridges Project. And this ordinance moves to appropriate, this is appropriation ordinance, and to move the funds around in the different 200s, 220, 220, TC 500, and for the different projects. And just to remind people where the bridges are.
There's two on Richland and one on Dairy Lane. They need to be upgraded. This is not really part of the Richland, South Ridge and Avenue upgrade, but they, when they started looking at it, they said these needed, had to be load reduced, I think it is. So that's why we're working on them. I think it comes from the Public Works money.
Right.
She won money. And this is for 65th Design Engineering, I believe.
Right.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2415. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion is carried. Ordinance 2615 is an ordinance levying special assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the West Union Street Infrastructure Project and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. I move to adopt 2615.
Second.
This is the final step of our improvements from West Union Street last summer. And this ordinance moves to assess the lane for their payment portion of the sidewalks.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 2615. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. The motion carries. We now have a series of ordinances for second reading. And what typically happens on these ordinances is that we will read the title through, unless there is a movement to, need to have them suspended tonight. We'll just be reading the title of them and then moving on to the next one. So ordinance 2815 is an ordinance amending ordinance 12214, the fringe benefit package for non-Union employees, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Ordinance 2915, an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Union, Washington and State on Saturday, June 20th, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 AM on Sunday, June 21st, 2015, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3015, this is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival on Saturday, June 20th to 1:00 AM, Sunday, June 21st, 2015, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3115 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 113.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on Saturday, June 20 to Sunday, June 21st, 2015, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3215 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, June 20 and Sunday, June 21, 2015, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. The next series of ordinances are for Brew Week. And ordinance 3315 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Washington and Carpenter on Saturday, July 18th, 2015, from 10:00 AM to midnight for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. The next ordinance, 3415, is an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during Ohio Brew Week, and that's introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3515 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on July 18th, 2015, for Ohio Brew Week, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Next is ordinance 3615, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on Saturday, July 18th, 2015, during the Ohio Brew Week event, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 3715, and this is for the next event that's happening this summer, this is for Bounty on the Bricks, so likewise, there will be a series of ordinances for this event. 3715 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington on Saturday, August 8th, 2015, from noon to midnight for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. 3815, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser on Saturday, August 8th, 2015, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. And then ordinance 3915 is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on August 8th, 2015, during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. And then we'll go on to, I think, our last event for this summer, and this is a series of three, what are called cruise-in events in the downtown area. So I'll be listing, and once again, a series of ordinances for this and the dates for them each time. Ordinance 4015 is an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Friday, June 5th, August 7th, and September 25th, 2015, for a cruise-in, introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 4315 is an ordinance granting, wait a minute, I'm sorry. Now, there's only one for that one, I'm sorry. I thought there was a whole series, but there's none.
We're done.
Okay, we're done with, we're done with all the summer events and all the closings and vendor licenses and everything. We're now on to a revocable license, and this is ordinance 4315, an ordinance granting renewable, renewal of a revocable license to Tom Kastarich, InSource Inc., 145 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 4415 is an ordinance granting renewal of, renewal of a revocable license to Michael Ginger, Athens Dental Depot, on 80 Columbus Road, to allow the placement of a sign on the city right-of-way, introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 4515 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract extension to provide financial support for the operation of the Athens County Economic Development Council and declaring an emergency. And that is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee. Ordinance 4615 is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department, Ohio Development Services Agency for a community development block grant for program year 2015, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And then we have ordinance 4715, an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner. And then ordinances for first reading, we only have two of those, so you survived the worst. Ordinance 4815 is an ordinance amending ordinance 12114, authorizing staffing levels. So this is introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
I'll speak to it.
Thank you, Councilmember Reisner.
The administration can't correct me on this, but I believe a sewer maintenance labor supervisor is leaving that position.
Retirement for the labor supervisor in the sewer maintenance, yes.
Okay, and they need to bring in a trainee, temporary, so we need to increase the staffing levels for that person.
Yeah. We'll go to two, so we have continuity.
Right.
The hope is we can get somebody selected by maybe August and then phase them out to, you know, December. So there's, so they can learn all the secrets of where all the pipes are.
So you have that institutional memory that needs to be passed on.
As much as we can, and that's short period of time.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's no need to suspend or, that's just, okay.
Okay. Ordinance 4915 is an ordinance amending the 2015 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Madam President, I move to suspend the rules on this ordinance.
Okay.
The reason being that this appropriation deals with some computer purchases. This computer, at least one of them has been ordered, on its way, the bill is coming in. We need to be ready to pay it. So I'd like to have the money transferred into the appropriate accounts, which this ordinance will do, so that the bills can be paid.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for ordinance 4915. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The rules have been suspended.
The ordinance that we're, Madam President, I move to adopt ordinance 4915.
Second.
This ordinance, as you can see in your packet there, I'm reading from paper, not from the computer, I'm sorry. I'm in transition here. We have to move some money from, by decrease the general fund, city council, that's from TC 200, by $1,315, and increase TC 500 by the same amount. Decrease general fund fire, TC 200 by $900, and increase TC 500 by the same amount. Section 2, here we're talking about $4,500 to the general fund police, TC 500 for computer purchases, and $300 to transportation, TC 400 to cover interest on the bus line. So that's it in a nutshell. We're simply moving money from one account to another, making it more appropriate for tracking purposes.
So transfers in section 1 and then an actual appropriation in section 2.
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, we have the motion and second to approve ordinance 4915. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. The motion is carried.
Aye.
Okay. This finishes the ordinances that we have under consideration for tonight. We now have announcements and other business, and I would entertain a motion to accept the auditor's financial reports for March 2015.
I still move?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the auditor's financial reports. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Okay. And as our last item tonight, we do, oh, under our other announcements, before I move on to the opportunities for the citizens to speak, we need to collect information about which committees will need to meet next week at our committee session in council.
Transportation.
Finance, personnel.
Committee of the whole. Okay.
Service safety.
And service safety. Okay, we'll have a full, full agenda. And then now we have the opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services not covered on the agenda. So if we have folks who are here tonight that are interested in speaking, I know that several of you are here particularly about the Number Fest. If you just please come up to the podium and sign in, and I know Ms. Poulser and Mr. Swank had said he wanted to speak also, and we'll have time. We will set the three-minute timer once you've signed in, and we'll ask you to respect that, so we have the opportunity to listen to as many comments as we can tonight. And don't forget that next Monday night, we will be having the committee of the whole where there will be additional discussion. So our purpose here tonight is to accept comments. It's not to provide any answers or dialogue tonight. It's mainly for citizens to communicate their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Janet Poulser, and I'm at 12 Wind Song Drive. Three weeks ago, I sat and listened to Dominic Petrosi of Prime Social Group tell me, the chief of police, three city council reps, public safety director, deputy public safety director, one county commissioner, one township trustee, and nine of my neighbors from the Wind Song-Elliottsville area, that the fest was going to be so much safer this year. He talked about increasing the 18 buses to 30 buses and installing a turnstile in order to make the exit from the fest an orderly one, thus assuring us that Route 56 would not be closed this year like it was last year because students decided to walk home instead of waiting for the buses. As I sat and listened to Dominic, a thought crossed my mind. First, it seemed to me as though I were listening to Harold Hill, the music man, trying to sell Little River City a bill of goods. Why was I listening to him telling me everything was going to be fine? Why wasn't I hearing about the safety measures that have been put in place by our elected officials? It seems as though the fest was put in place and then people started to realize that there was a problem. Now, we're all in the position of reacting to the situation instead of establishing acceptable standards and practices before these huge events take place. Due to lack of forethought, my neighbors and I have been placed in harm's way and found ourselves scrambling to discover a law or ordinance or code to protect us. Anyone who uses Route 56 and Union Street to access Oblenas Hospital is going to find it very difficult to reach the emergency room during the fest. The ACEMS must use Union Street no matter where they're headed. The 20,000-plus attendees at the fest need Route 56 to be clear in order for emergency vehicles to reach them. I stood at the intersection of Route 56 and Elliottsville Road Saturday night from 9:45 to 10:45 PM. The road was filled with young adults in various stages of inebriation walking toward Athens. The sheriff's department had the very difficult duty of trying to make all the pedestrians walk on the right side of the road. In addition, I saw multiple vehicles parked on Elliottsville Road picking up fest-goers. One pickup truck bed had at least 15 people in it. Again, Dominic assured us that no gypsy cab rides would be allowed. I would like to propose that a commission be established to set some kind of guidelines to keep this community safe during large events like this one. I don't want Dominic Petrosi or Prime Social Group to decide the appropriate measures. We've seen how well that works. I want a commission to make up, to be made up of city council members, township trustees, county commissioners, and residents of our township and community to decide what's in the best interest of our community, keeping safety and quality of life issues in mind. Because we have three jurisdictions that are impacted by this event, I think a commission is called for. As the meeting with Dominic ended three weeks ago, he offered our neighborhood residents dinner and a hotel room in Columbus for the night of the fest. I believe he thinks throwing money at the problem is the solution. I say let the residents and Athens officials decide what's best for this community. Thank you.
That egg timer's kind of scary. Times Allen Swank live at 30 times in place. Two weeks ago, I submitted a letter to the editor. Whoa, that was quick. Come on, Debbie. Two weeks ago, I submitted a letter to the editor, which was published in the Athens News. And at that time, as Ms. Poulser just mentioned, it called for the formation of a task force, a task force to prevent this sort of thing from happening, a task force that gets us away from the idea of fest and forget. But before we form a task force or a commission, I think it's very, very important that everyone understand that the history of fests at Ohio University, in Ohio, at Ohio University in Athens go back almost 45 years. And in fact, in the mid-'70s, the Athens Music Festival was so big and the artists that came to town were so famous that a guy by the name of Bruce Springsteen was relegated to sixth position on the bill. We've always had fests since 1972 in Athens. Something happened, though, that really changed them. When we came here in 1979, there were 14,000 students at Ohio University. Each green had its own fest in the spring, south green, east green and west green. And then the big one, Spring Fest, was on the south green, inner Merrill Fields. At that time, the drinking age was 18. Residents' life, a big part of Ohio University, was very much involved in those fests. Drinking age changed. Now it's 21. And the university... Drinking age changed, now it's 21, and the university probably needed to wash its hands of the supervision of these fests. So instead of having fests supervised by residents' life in a contained environment where liquor consumption could be regulated, they've now moved to the neighborhoods and just barely out of town, an unregulated area. We can't go back, the drinking age will stay 21 in this country, particularly if we want our highway funds. But this isn't an either-or situation. I see this as an opportunity, and Mrs. Poleser said, and I will echo, a commission, a task force, whatever you want to call it, needs to be formed immediately. But one group we need to include in that are the students. They can tell us a lot. What's the opportunity we could have here? We could have something as big and as beneficial to this city as Boogie on the Bricks, Ohio Brew Week, the space thing that's coming later this summer. I really don't think the fests are going to go away, but they have to go away in the present form, and I think there's enough collective energy and intelligence between the city, the university, our safety forces, and the students of Ohio University to provide and promote a safe and enjoyable fest for all. Thank you very much.
Alan, did you sign in?
Hello, my name is Alice Ratliff, and I reside at 43 First Street. I'm aware of the fest that's been going on in town for a long time, but what I saw on Saturday, oh my, the vile, the disrespect. I happened to be at the American Legion working on the past commander's dinner that we're having that evening. And the trucks, the buses, the cars, all loaded way beyond capacity, and the foot traffic was just incredible. And then, as the day went on, and then, of course, the closing of Route 56. And then, as I was trying to go home, about 9 o'clock that night, now, mind you, the traffic, it was not hundreds of people, it was thousands of people. And so the foot traffic is on both sides of the road, I'm trying to get out of the Legion parking lot, now there's a police officer sitting across the street, just watching. Now, he could very easily came up and stopped the foot traffic, so I could get out, but I had to wait, I lived five minutes from there. I had to wait a good four, it was 45 minutes before I got home. And that really, when I got home, I was so mad, and I thought, how could this city, I dare them do this to me? I pay taxes, and so does my neighbors and everybody out on 56, I just felt that you guys have really, really let us down. So those were my concerns for the evening. The other thing is another friend of mine was going home, and he lives out 56, and he had to go out 682 Richland Avenue, 50, to Radford Road, and then to go out 50. So it really inconveniences all of us, even though I don't even know what the amount of money that it brings to the city. But I certainly think that something needs to be done to it, and I know you guys are trying to work on resolutions. I did want to show, though, I picked up the application that the students have to send in for their tickets. And it certainly states on the application that there will be no traffic individuals trying to attempt to walk on the public highway, will be arrested or prosecuted to the fullest extent. I'll bet there was not one arrest, and if there were, I would like to see it. So my main thing here is in resolution, resolving it, is where are the police? And where's the people that are putting it together? Yeah, they give you a big bed of roses, and none of those roses bloom. So where are the police when all this is going on? Steve, I did read an article that you had about you doing an aerial view, and I thought that was a great wake-up call. It was a great wake-up call for me on Saturday, because I just did not know, I mean, I know about No Fest and Palmer Fest, but I had no idea about the fest out 56. So I was appalled, and like I said, it was vile, it was disrespectful. And personally, I would like to see it go away. I don't think it will, but I would like to see it go away. So thank you. Oh, that was a good time.
Are there others who'd like to make any comments? Yeah.
I'll make this quick. My name is Kathy Heck, I live at 94 Second Street. I think you all know the situation, probably witnessed some of it, so I'm not going to go into detail about that, except to add that I was also at the Legion Saturday night working for the past commander's dinner, and found out later, there are mailboxes across the street, right in front of the Habitat House there, the Little Red School House, and the mailbox was vandalized. They found on the ground torn-up letters, one had a $300 check in there, as it was coming as a donation for Buckeye Boys State. Now, I think that's a federal, you know, fence, you know, getting it, but that just shows how disrespectful they are. They also pulled all the flags that the Legion had stuck in the ground, in their, around their building, out of, pulled them out, threw them in the dirt, and things like that. There was one couple that wandered through the walkway, the path, the bike path through there to the, to the Wall Fields, and the guy was holding her up, and she was being pretty outrageous in front of all the kids that were playing ball. I tried to go down there at 4 o'clock to first set up before the dinner to help, and I got stalled before I ever got to Siemens. So I turned around in Siemens, and I ended up parking at the West State Park and coming through the walk-through, so that I wouldn't have to deal with it going home, because, as Alice said, just streams and streams of people on foot, walking along there, and the cars and the buses, and just as many cars going the other direction. I don't know if they were picking up or why, because I expected more to be coming, you know, into town. It was both ways, so just a few more things that you might not have known about. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Maxine.
Hi, my name is Jamie Strucker, and I live at 8620 Elliottsville Road. The more that I learn about Number Fest, the more I'm convinced that there's no way to hold this kind of event at this location without threatening the safety of everyone in and around the venue. There are problems with crowd control, there are problems with being able to evacuate in an emergency, and there are problems, of course, stemming from all the kids coming out on foot and blocking the road. So I want to talk about the problems with crowd control. People do get trampled at events like this, and it could happen here. In the wake of one concert disaster, Ohio passed a state law for safety at live performances. I don't know if Number Fest is in compliance with that law, it may not be, but even if it is, with just one point of entry and exit, they're really asking for trouble. Number Fest has no way, if there were an emergency, for people to evacuate, so if there were a severe storm or any problem like that, people would just be trapped there, and there's no shelter, and a lot of people would probably get hurt. And as you know, when Number Fest lets out, as everybody's been talking about, everybody pours onto the road, blocks the road. I tried calling the police about an unlicensed cab on that evening, and they said, sorry, we're just too busy, which really says, you know, they are just stretched to the limit, and this is more than our local law enforcement can handle. I'm not a student, but I want to say, don't put the blame on the students for this mess, because it really stems from the fact that this event is a 20,000-person event held out on a two-lane road that has just one entrance and exit, and there's just no way to safely hold an event at that, like this, at that kind of location. So, yeah, don't blame the students, look at who picked the location and who's really profiting from this, Dominic Petrosi and Prime Social Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine, did you want to?
My name is Maxine Lantain. I live at 74 Second Street in Athens, and I have a business at 104 West Union Street. And the pickups and delivery, you know, to the fest was right across the street from us. And the hundreds of people that were there, waiting in line and walking across West Union and filling up the road for a lot of the day, were a constant disruption. There was also a poker run, motorcycle poker run, and the motorcycles were riding down the sidewalk, because they couldn't go through the street. We called the police, same thing, they were too stretched and couldn't come. We have tapes of them just riding straight down the sidewalks, with all these people around them, on the sidewalks and in the street. My other point that no one else has mentioned is the trash. It was abominable. I've heard about Stimson, I know what it looked like on Union all the way out, because we bike rode around it to see how bad it was. And it was horrible. And I don't know who's paying for all that trash pickup, I know it was done very well, to a certain extent, but I still, it goes back, you said, don't blame the students, but that's a lack of respect, to dump everything, bottles, cans, papers, lunch, we saw salad containers in the middle of 56. It just, something does need to be done. And whoever, you know, as Alan said, I think a task force and, or a committee or something to get this under control. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't planning on talking tonight, but I figured I would give a different perspective than everyone else here. I went to Number Fest, oh, I'm Alex Shell, 971 West Green Drive, James Hall. I went to Number Fest, it was my first year, and I went to get on the bus to go home. We were on the bus, we probably didn't get more than 40 feet up the driveway, and officers came onto our bus and kicked everyone off. They didn't give us a reason, they didn't tell us why, they just said, everyone needs to get off the bus, or we will be arrested. It happened to all the buses, I don't know if it was just the timing or what, but the 30 buses that were in the driveway, thousands of people were kicked off all the buses, and we were forced to walk home. We were just minding our own business, I don't know what happened. So none of us wanted to walk home, everyone on those buses wanted a ride home, by no stretch of the imagination would any person want to walk three miles back home after standing at a concert all day. Probably the only sober person that walked back home. So I saw pretty much everything that most people wouldn't. Yeah, there was people being disrespectful, all that kinds of stuff. Traffic was backed up for miles and miles at every intersection that we passed. It was just a mess, and I'm not sure, we were promised buses for when we left, we had, there was a $10 BYOB fee that we had to pay this year. My friends paid that fee, just so that we would have a safe way home, and that didn't happen. So I just figured I'd give a little different perspective to everyone else here. Thanks.
Thanks for the comments.
My name's Cindy Parker, and I moved to State Route 56 two years ago, so I've experienced two Number Fests, and I have a ringside seat because I'm right across from Stages School. And one of the things that bothers me, the one thing, I'm imprisoned in my house that day because I can't leave. I did go somewhere earlier in the day, it took me 20 minutes to go from the corner to my house, which is across from the school. And going out, once you, I mean, you don't want to go out. I mean, my kids couldn't get home, they waited for an hour to finally get a police escort. But one of the things that bothers me, something terrible is going to happen here. I watched the emergency squad come in, get people at Number Fest, and then try to drive down State Route 56 and Union Street with people all over the road. So how do you think those EMT drivers feel, you know, trying to get through there like that? It's a total disaster, they, you know, they pee in your yard, they let people off, they tell them they're not going to let people drop them off, no one writes them tickets. If they'd write a few tickets for people dropping them off, maybe they'd quit doing that. They'd write a few tickets for having open containers on the street, maybe they would quit doing that. But something needs to be done. It's an abomination, in my opinion, so I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to offer some comments or insights? Or speak on any other item? Yes?
Okay, hello, my name's Peter Kossis, and I live at 1 Bryan Road, but we have a business on Stimson Avenue. The thing that hasn't been mentioned by anyone else yet tonight was that the buses that we saw leaving that Stimson Avenue pickup point were overloaded. I've never seen bus rings sag, and I think it's about 90 people that you can fit on the bus. They were, I mean, they were pressed up against the sides of the window, they were hanging out, so I don't see it as a better, it's no better than the trucks picking them up, I mean, it's just, it's just another, it's another issue. That was, that was it.
Thanks for the comments. Well, I thank all of you for taking the time to come tonight to share with us impressions, different vantage points that you had, and know that the city, the city administration is working with the community, hopefully also with students, with the county, to look at some of the issues that were raised. And as I said, we will have the full committee meeting next Monday night, starting at 7 o'clock, where there will be additional discussion, we're hoping additional information from the city and the county available. And seeing that if there are no other people who want to speak tonight, I will entertain a motion for adjournment of our meeting.
Certainly.
Okay. We have a move, motion, and a second to adjourn our meeting at 7:49 p.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All those opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.